It is now 7:00 PM. So I'd like to call the Joint Ventura Department of Airport's Authority to order. Could we stand and have a pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, pure, and just for all.
Mr. John, would you please give us a roll call?
For Camrio Airport Authority Supervisor Kelly Long has been excused. Supervisor Zaragosa? Councilmember Craven?
Here.
Councilmember Mulchee?
Present.
Public member Bill Thomas?
Here.
Alternate public member Michael Hodson?
Present.
Councilmember Santangelo? And Camrio has a quorum. For Oxnard Airport Authority Supervisor Kelly Long has been excused. Supervisor Zaragosa?
Here.
Mayor Tim Flynn?
Here.
Councilmember Parello?
Here.
And public member Walter Calhoun?
Here.
And alternate public member Eugene Fussell?
Here.
Oxnard has a quorum.
You got to run the Oxnard piece.
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to, item number three is approval of minutes.
What is the approval?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
For the Oxnard one?
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing non-approved.
I believe there has to be a motion, first and second.
So, vote. Can I have a motion? Thank you, John. Second?
Your second. All in favor?
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, item four on our agenda is a public comment period. I will go through the spiel if I have any public comment cards. Is there anybody that wants to make any public comment that are out in the audience? Sam? You? Okay. Okay. Seeing none. Item five is unfinished business.
There's none?
None.
Just checking with staff to make sure they didn't have any?
No, not at this point.
New business. Oxnard and Camrio Airport Authority, number A or item A is receiving file report for the termination of month-to-month leases of aircraft storage hangars.
Good evening. For the record, this is Jorge Rubio. So at the previous meeting, there was a question about what is the due process for hangar tenants from month-to-month tenants when the Department of Airports ends basically or provides a notice to terminate? And what this did is it prompted your authorities to ask questions and to bring forward the process as to how we terminate month-to-month hangar leases at the airports. And that's what we're bringing to you today. There is basically two processes, and they're similar in a way. But what we have is we can terminate a hangar for cause, or we can terminate a hangar with no cause. The agreements, the way that they run right now, they are month-to-month agreements. And if there is a breach, the Department of Airports can actually provide a cure-on-default notice, which I'm going to go in a few moments. But when there is, let's say, no breach and the Department of Airports decides to terminate an agreement for no reason, we can do so with a 30-day notice. So let me go into those for a moment. So both of these agreements basically have some legal protections and the right to judicial hearings. It's a month-to-month agreement, as the hangar agreements call it, so they can be terminated with a 30-day notice from each side. The Department of Airports is, or has been delegated from the Board of Supervisors, the authority, to start and terminate leases. So basically, any lease that we have that's under five years that we manage administratively, we have the authority, the director of airports or his designee, can start a lease and terminate a lease at administrative level. Now, the question was as to, again, is there due process? There is no due process. There's a legal process, but there is no due process through the Airport Advisory Commission nor the Airport Authority, mostly because the delegation of authority from the Board of Supervisors to the Department of Airports. Now, again, we have two types of leases, for cause and no cause. Let's focus on the for cause, for example, right now. So the for cause, whenever there's a breach of the lease, the Department of Airports will provide the tenant with a 3-day notice to correct the breach or the default. And what this is used, for the most part, is whenever a tenant, for example, doesn't pay, if they're a month behind, two months behind sometimes, we can tell them, hey, time to catch up, you owe us rent and pay us rent within this 3 days' notice, otherwise, basically, the agreement terminates. There is a correction available, and that's the payment. And there's other items also that could be brought up, but it's mostly the payments. If the breach is corrected, the termination action ceases, and, you know, the tenant is able to continue to enjoy the tenancy at the airport. But if the breach is not corrected, the county may begin unlawful detainer eviction process. What this means is, in coordination with county council and outside council, which actually is on retainer with the Department of Airports and with the county, can go through the court system in order to evict the tenant. At the end of the 3-day notice, and if the breach is not corrected and the tenant fails to vacate, then the county starts with an unlawful detainer process. And this process is the one that's available, the legal process that's available to, basically, any tenant at the airport. That's for cause, so 3 days. The no cause, the lease basically says that the county has the ability to terminate the lease with a 30-day notice, so the notice time goes from 3 days to 30 days. And the important thing to call out here is that either party can terminate with a 30-day notice. I mean, it's a month-to-month lease. If you're familiar, if you rented an apartment, it's basically something similar. Anybody can provide the 30-day notice, and the agreement is basically terminated. Now, if the county provides a notice to the tenant, there is no correction available. There's nothing really under breach, because, I mean, it's a for no reason or no cause. And there's no opportunity to correct, because, I mean, again, it's for no cause. But at the end of the 30-day notice, if the tenant fails to vacate, then the county may begin the unlawful detainer process and eviction process. And it could potentially end up in court. Now, what happens here is if the, you know, if the tenant, for example, goes through the court system and he is victorious and actually wins the unlawful detainer process, then he can stay at the airport. But if not, they obviously have to remove the items from the airport. Yes, sir?
If, on the no cause, if the tenant changes their mind in about 15 days and says, you know, I thought I was going to sell my airplane, but it fell through, so I don't want to sell it now, under the correction available, what would happen there? Is it diehard, they can't do anything, or can they change?
Well, what I can tell you is, what you're explaining right now is that you're calling for a for cause breach. So he would fall under this category, it's a 3-day, and we'll give him the opportunity to correct it. Now, the no cause, we're not giving a cause. So we're not saying you broke the rules, we're not saying anything. It's a no cause, we're just providing the notice, and that's it.
But I think, I think what Dr. is saying, that, assuming that he gives a 30-day notice, because maybe he sold his plane, or thinking of selling the plane, but consequently decided not to.
Oh, the tenant?
He wants to reinstate.
Okay, got it, got it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's really up to the tenant. What I can tell you is, if it was a county-owned hangar, the way that we would treat it is, if we already have somebody that we have notified that the hangar is going to become available, and the tenant already provided a notice, and we have already started the process, I don't know if we would be able to keep him.
But if you didn't have anybody that could potentially do that?
Potentially.
Yeah. But then, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Is that ruleman writing somewhere in the policy?
So?
It sounds like a strong possibility.
Are you talking about when the tenant provides a notice?
Yes, the individual gets a 30-day notice, and they're backed down with a few large listed things that's available. Is there a place that says you're out of line?
It is up to our discretion right now.
I'm going to stay here, so I hit the wrong button.
No worries. I think you can reset it there. Okay. Well, that is basically the report. We have Tom Temple with County Council here to answer any questions. But basically, nor the Advisory Commission or the Airport Authority are hitting barriers to listen to month-to-month agreements. The Board of Supervisors has delegated that authority to the Department of Airports Director, and that's basically the way that it is right now.
Can I ask the County Council for the harbor? Since they don't have a board, so I'm assuming that the County Council has to support the Harbor Commission or whatever the organ, that board is called. What, how do they, how do they process a termination of lease at the harbor?
I have no idea.
They have the same, excuse me, they have the same jurisdiction that you guys have, you know, they can do the lease and terminate leases and so forth.
So the Department of Harbor or the Harbor Commissioner?
It's enterprise fund, too.
I can respond. I actually had a conversation with the Harbor Deputy Director today, and basically, what they have is they have a license agreement for slips. And there's no process for them to claim to any elected official or elected body. It relies, they rely on the Director of the Harbor Department.
Yeah, that's right.
Bill?
Bill? Yes.
So I've read this, the 14th Amendment for due process does not govern here, where the issue is a contract. So my question is, where does the 14th Amendment, where is it appropriate in some kind of an action between potentially a government entity and private entity?
We'll try to avoid getting too deep into the weeds, but the 14th Amendment is best thought of as applying, generally speaking, when a government agency is operating in a regulatory capacity as opposed to as the owner of property. So the police, for example, enforcing the law, come and seize something from you, there's a 14th Amendment protection that applies there, and you get a right to contest that. If the government's operating in proprietary capacity and has entered into a contract with you, then you're treating the government as any contractor, essentially, and the government is not, by virtue of the agreement, you agree to the terms of the agreement, and that essentially means the 14th Amendment doesn't apply. There are contracts in which the 14th Amendment would apply. The most common one that we deal with in my office is employment contracts, where every employee of the county that achieves something akin to tenure is, it cannot be terminated except for cause. So when a contract specifies that it cannot be terminated except for cause, then you cannot terminate the contract without providing due process protections. And we have to deal with that on the employment side all the time. Another type of contract, according to the courts, that cannot be terminated without providing 14th Amendment protections are the agreements under which people are provided welfare benefits, where there's a great level of dependency on the provisions that are, the support that's being given to them. So those types of contracts, either a permanent, generally speaking, a permanent contract or a contract that can't be terminated except for cause, is a contract that, for which due process would have to be provided, essentially an opportunity to contest the action. The reason why we say that the leases here have significant procedural protections, and in fact, because it provides a judicial hearing, it's a greater level of due process. For example, you terminate an employee, that person's not entitled to a judicial hearing, they're just entitled to an administrative hearing. But here, a tenant who contests the termination of his or her lease has the opportunity to contest that in court in the unlawful detainer proceeding, which is essentially the greatest procedural protection that's found in the law.
Thank you.
I have rentals, you know, because, you know, I was in real estate, and basically, I have the same thing with my rentals, you know, and following the for cause or no cause. The only difference between residential, if a person has been there more than one year, then it's a 60-day, as opposed to commercial. So just to clarify that. But I basically have the same thing, and unfortunately, I have gone to the 3-day notice and right into court, you know, so. But that's basically what we have here, is almost standard. I know that Charlotte has quite a few rentals, too, you know, and we all follow that procedure and that, and the tenants have a due process that they can follow. And of course, with no cause, if you give them the 30-day notice, they don't move, then you go to court, and the people stay there until the judge says, you're in or you're out. Am I, in the right direction?
Sometimes they stay anyway.
Sometimes they stay anyway, right. But I've done that, I know how that, basically how that works, you know. But again, residential, there's 60 days if you're over one year and 30 days under one year, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman? Has the process of the month-to-month hangar leases and/or the leases themselves in terms of content or structure undergone any significant changes in recent memory? Or is this more or less the same as it's been for quite a while?
The agreements have been month-to-month, basically, since the 1980s, 1981. I think there was a change in 1985, but nothing that had to do with the notice. What I can tell you now is, right now, we are working, and that's another subject, but we're working to update the hangar leases, and that's the county and the private hangars. And that's a process that's currently being reviewed. But we will see where we end up. There's a term that's being proposed, and also term language, and also month-to-month leases that may continue. We'll see where we end up.
Okay.
With respect to the 3-day notice, 3 calendar days?
I believe it is 3 calendar days, yes.
And the other thing is if the person is locked out, are we responsible for the items inside, if anything happens to the items inside?
What happens is, we don't access the hangar. If we are starting, if we give them a 3-day notice, the items would be locked under the tenant's lock, with the tenant's lock on it.
And a certain tenant?
Correct.
Yeah, in other words, we don't, we can't lock the tenant out until after the court has issued an order in the unlawful detainer action.
Could I just ask for a clarification on Mr. Parello's question? He said, are we responsible or liable? I thought we were not. This was just an information item, it was the Board of Supervisors who was taking the action.
Right, the county.
The county, not us as the authority.
Yep. It's the county, not us.
Well, he's not part of the Board of Supervisors, but he's part of this, so I was just wondering, I just wanted to make sure.
That is correct.
Okay.
It is a report and file unless you have more questions.
Any other questions? Okay.
Well, we don't have, to take, is there a motion on that?
Receive and file. Receive and file.
Yes, it's a.
Second.
I think we should do it independently.
Okay, so for Camrio, do I hear a motion on receive and file?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For Oxnard?
Aye.
I'll say again. All in favor?
Okay, don't forget, you got to speak into the mic so she can record it.
Can you, really?
No, I'm sorry, but did somebody move for Oxnard?
I moved for Oxnard.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're approved.
Okay, item B is the approval of the five-year capital improvement plan for both Camrio and Oxnard.
We have, we will leave that item in the capable hands of Ms. Erin Powers, our programs and project administrator. Please go ahead.
Can I ask for the?
For this?
Good evening, thank you. I'm going to make sure to try to speak up. Chair, authority members, staff requests, I'm just, we don't have it up. Staff requests that your authority recommend the Board of Supervisors approve a five-year capital improvement plan for Camrio and Oxnard airports, as well as authorizing the Director of Airports to apply for grants to fund the projects scheduled in federal fiscal, fiscal, I can't say the word, fiscal years 2019 and 2020. In order to qualify for federal and state funding for capital improvement projects, the FAA and Caltrans require the airport to submit a five-year capital improvement plan each year. So we work with, we work with the FAA to develop the plan to sort of match up our programming and improvement needs with what they foresee as potential funding availability over this term. The projects in the capital improvement plan are listed in order of highest priority, though there's no guarantee that we will receive funding in any of the years that we have programmed the projects. I have more to talk about, but we can do it as we start to look at some of the projects for each airport.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Do we?
I think Camrio can get, what, 95% and Oxnard 90? Is that still true?
So that's just about right. So on my first slide, I actually have that, so for federal funding, both airports are eligible for 90% funding. Caltrans offers a 5% match of the federal dollars, and then the airport is response, or county is responsible for the match.
For the difference.
Or for the difference.
Okay.
So at Camrio Airport, over the next five years, in the capital improvement plan before you, we are anticipating that we have about $35 million worth of projects. If we look at the breakdown, it sort of gives you an idea that we're talking about a lot of federal dollars and significant investment of both the county and Caltrans as our partners. Over the past five years at Camrio, we have continued to have, develop, to receive, to be the beneficiary of federal dollars, although we have started to see, because we have, as you see when we go forward, we have several large-dollar projects coming up. The FAA has sort of been asking us to program some no-project years to save up some of our entitlements towards the larger projects. Federal fiscal year 2019, the FAA has indicated that they may have funds for us to rehabilitate tax-away hotel. This is essentially a seal coat, so it's just, it's a maintenance project. Additionally, we are embarking on the preliminary documents for the future runway construction that will be coming up soon, and we'll see that in a few slides. In 2020, this is, we're going to have a few no-project years, this will go fast, but we have $150,000 in entitlements, and that sort of rolls over like in our check, almost like a checkbook. In 2021, another no-project year. And in 2022, a no-project year. So not only are we saving up entitlements, but additionally, over at Oxnard Airport, we have some large projects that we have, or hopefully are going to be funded, and so they, for some of those years, they have us offsetting it at each airport. So in 2023, we are hoping to reconstruct the runway and much of the tax-away connectors or portions thereof. And the cost right now is estimated at about $35 million, almost. In 2024, we expect to try to request funding for a master plan update, and then also to rehabilitate our concrete tax-aways and apron areas, and additionally to rehab the central apron. Depending on what the needs are, we may be talking about, for the concrete portions, crack ceiling and limited panel replacement. But most of this is maintenance, it's not, we're not looking at reconstruction. In 2025, we have a series of maintenance projects that we'll be trying to catch up on, because we do have needs. Some of these projects actually may, maybe due prior to 2025, but the FAA has indicated, because of our runway reconstruction and tax-away reconstruction, that they're going to have to be pushed off a little bit later. We hope, and we work with the FAA, we've let them know that if for any reason, funding does become available in those no-project years and we can move something up, we will make every effort to make that happen. And I just want to pause for a moment, if anyone has questions for Camrio projects in particular. I'd love you to.
Bill? So my question is, the no-project years, we have this, one of my favorite words, entitlements of $150,000 per year. So is that something that we can, for lack of a better term, put in the bank so we can wind up with $450,000 from the three years that we can spend at our discretion at a future date or during those three years?
So, that's correct. So they are entitlements, they do, the entitlements expire after three years. I mean, for, you know, one year's entitlements has a three-year expiration date, but they do roll over. We could push potentially to try to spend those dollars. However, the FAA does look to us to earmark those dollars towards some of the projects we have programmed. So we couldn't, we couldn't force it, but that we do, it is almost like an account. We have those dollars saved up in an account that we are entitled to spend before they expire.
So is it at our discretion where we spend the money, the $450,000, even though the FAA is saying, encouraging, recommending, whatever, to do it on the capital projects that we have planned?
Not totally.
Not totally what?
Well, it would have to be fed, for, it would have to be an eligible project, and they would need to have, they would need to approve your spending of those dollars in that fiscal year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But can those dollars be used at Oxnard?
The Camrio dollars? They can. So right now, even though we have each airport and we try to keep it fairly separate, we, it is considered one entity, we're the county of Ventura.
But if we needed a, for emergency, whatever, we could use those.
And in the past, there have been occasions where one airport's entitlements or a portion of- or a portion of have, have assisted with the other airport's projects.
Especially if we're close to the 36 months, yeah?
Oh, yes, yes, we wouldn't, for, that would be a perfect example if, if for some reason we were unable to get a project at one airport and one of our, and some entitlements were going to expire, we could, you know, definitely ask to put it towards the other airport's project, as long as we're being able to program it and the FAA is amenable.
Thank you.
Can you please put the slide up that had 800-some thousand dollars for a seal coat? They're not numbered.
It was in 2019.
Okay, I don't see that in my packet, and I'm looking at slide 6B17, and it shows one for $707,000. The seal coat, what is the life expectancy of the seal coat? And my question was, that is not going to be rehabilitated later on. The seal coat's supposed to last much longer than that $34 million project coming up.
Just one second, I want to check your.
Looks at, looks at 6B14 fiscal year 2023 is in the packet.
Yeah, the number just doesn't match up, but it says 707.
I apologize, that was updated.
So, the. Which one is correct?
Well, the, the larger amount.
What is the life expectancy of the seal coat?
So, typically, when we're talking about a seal coat, in the past, we have done slurry seals, which is a sand-based seal coat. And it's recommended that asphalt surfaces are resealed every five to seven years. So, I would say five to seven years. One of the, we're, we're going to be in design for this, one of the, you know, airport design standards and, and methods keep changing. So, my engineer has just recently indicated that, that slurry seal may not be allowed in this case, that the FAA is moving towards seal coats, a fog seal with less sand.
Thank you.
So, that will be a new product for us.
Now, there's some, one of the things that I noticed was that, that there's a couple of areas that just got a seal coat maybe two years ago, maybe, eh, either three years ago or two years ago that are already starting to deteriorate fairly badly. What do we do when they're, they're not projected to get replaced until 2025?
Well, that's where we have competing needs. So, really, a lot of it is advocating to the FAA. I mean, some of these, for example, over at Oxnard Airport, the East Apron is a project that has been due for a seal since 2018, 17 or 18, and we've been putting it on our CIP each year, trying to make sure that it doesn't get forgotten, that it needs to be funded, and it hasn't. So, they did finally find a place for it, but it's not for a few more years. So, it's going to be past that time. You know, we, so, that's something that the airport's asking itself, because as we go forward and they aren't funding our maintenance projects, because we have these other larger reconstruction projects that they're, you know, that they're putting us on hold, we have to look at if it's, you know, if it looks like it's going to be a deterioration to a safety issue, then we're going to make that a priority, and we'll be doing that most likely out of pocket. We did have, if we have a pavement failure, it will be addressed, and the airport, Airport Enterprise Fund will address it. But we are looking at, you know, especially as, if the FAA is allowing something less than a slurry in seal coats, that is also a product that it will be less expensive, and potentially, we might be able to do some Band-Aids in between some bridges, so to speak. All right, at Oxnard Airport, we too are looking at some significant investment over the next five years. Nearly 14 and a half million, with 13 million coming from federal grants. And, and then the Caltrans and airport share, also significant. Oxnard, because we are hoping to have a runway rehabilitation or reconstruction in 2020, has been on the no-project diet ahead of Camrio. So, you can see that as we look at the accomplishments, that we actually have had several no-project years starting in 2015. We were able to get a grant for an airport layout plan update in 2017, and part of that is the FAA's recognition that in order to redo the runway, we need to make sure that our, that we've looked at everything, it's part of the planning process. So, in 2019 at Oxnard, we have a no-project year. But in 2020, we are looking to redo the runway. Right now, the airport and the FAA continue to work on exactly what level of rehabilitation that's going to be. We have, late last year, we actually under, we contracted for geotechnical work and for preliminary design, and that analysis is, we're going to have that in our hands soon. So, we will definitely have more information, but right now, the FAA is looking to program about $8 million to redo Oxnard's runway. You'll see that, you know, originally, if you recall, for those that have been through this capital improvement plan over the last few years, that we also need to reconstruct our tax-away connectors. We have tried with the FAA to make it, to put it into one project here, because we, it, whether you do one or the other, there's significant potential, you know, closure time, and so it makes sense to try to keep the projects together. However, the FAA has, has made it very clear that there's not enough federal funding to, to fund it in one year. So, they have had us separate it, and we, right now, we are looking at potentially reconstruction of the tax-away connectors in 2021.
Erin?
Yes.
Excuse me, will that, that's someone's investigation, for lack of a better term. Is that going to, to include all the recommendations for rehabilitation, alternatives, et cetera? And then, at that point, would those be looked at at the county and, and the FAA? Or is it a joint study, or do we look at it? I mean, what's the process there, just, just quickly, so?
Sure, so this, so essentially, the scope of work was blessed, we, was reviewed and approved by the FAA. And so, we went out there and took 40 borings, and the, and it's gone through the process, and they're analyzing and making the recommendations, right now, our engineer is. And then what's going to happen is, is we are going to set up a consultation with the FAA to go over the results and to discuss where we go from, based on the actual geotechnical evidence. Because the last, you know, our, under the life cycle, the runway is due for a reconstruction. Five years ago, we conducted some geotechnical, not 40 borings, but we did some geotechnical investigation that indicated that we have some solid base and that, that rehabilitation may be possible. Now, the FAA has, wants to quantify that by running models, and in order to do that, we had to perform this additional geotechnical work, which will, whether it's a, can be used for a rehab or the reconstruction. So, the same data is going to drive the direction that we go.
So, this hypothetical design work, is it focused more on life expectancy or capacity now?
So, it, it takes into account both, because your, your design and your, your cross-sections are built on your, on your capacity, which, and designs, the design standards of the, your critical design aircraft for the airport. So, it, it takes it all into account, and the FAA has to agree in order to fund it.
Thank you.
So, in 2022, I think we mentioned a no-project year. And then in 2023, we finally have the East Apron, which we've been trying for several years to get funded back on the list, where they've found a spot where they think there's potential. And then along with the executive, the executive apron and the transient, a portion of the transient apron. In 2024, this is looking like a big year, and will be refined as we go forward. One of the big projects is actually reconstruction of the tax-away Foxtrot. That is going to be due for reconstruction. We're looking currently to do some maintenance to help prolong the life, because we are, you know, we do have some cracks and some other things that, that are calling for some attention. And then, we have also reconstruction of the terminal apron, the concrete. That is something that's still on our list, and we'll continue to evaluate as we go forward. But one of the new items that is before us is that, is number three that Jorge is pointing at, is that there have been some additional property purchases of property that has recently come up for sale, that lies in the runway protection zone. And so that has boosted up our, our ask for 2024.
Is that, is that the armory or the school district facilities?
It's the Oxnard Union High School School District Administrative Offices and Meeting Offices across the street.
They're going to be moving, right?
Correct.
Or have moved, I guess.
They, they have purchased another site, and they're trying to sell this one.
Is the armory included in this?
The armory belongs to the city, and no, I don't believe the armory is for sale.
Just a quick question, if the, Mr. Chair, if the armory were to be for sale, I mean, is that something, I mean, it falls in the same area as these other buildings, so would that be likely to be potentially purchased, too?
The, the way that it's happening with the FAA is, they're saying that there's no money available, but if they, they had money available right now, they could potentially purchase those properties that are available at the moment. But if a project somewhere else in the nation fails, because there's over 3,000 airports that have, you know, several projects, there's a potential to actually, that those properties could sell right now, and there may be a potential for the FAA to purchase them, but they cannot plan for it. So, that's why it shows in 2024. If the armory, since it is in the, in the, under the runway protection zone, was for sale, we could potentially tell, notify the FAA, so they can consider purchasing it.
And quick question, the adult education buildings, are those a part of this, too?
There, there is a small portion of the parking lot that would fall under the runway protection zone that would potentially be.
Right in that cone.
Sold, correct.
But the, but the other buildings aren't?
No.
And then the last question is, once the buildings, if the buildings were to be purchased, what does the, what would be done with those buildings?
That is something that needs to be discussed, but the FAA, for anything that is under the runway protection zone, don't want to see anything there. The only use that is allowed is basically agriculture. And my belief is that those buildings would need to be tore down.
Bill? Can you go back to the five-year, past five years of projects, Oxnard slide, please? Okay, so we have the rollover entitlements from 2016 and 2017, 2015. What, what are the current plans for that, those funds? Because they're, if it's a three-year shelf life, then they're due to expire here or have expired.
So, the, I believe that the 2015 entitlements were used to help with the north-east hangar development project over at Camrio. And the 2016 went toward, and the 2016 went towards the, and the 2017 entitlements were used for the airport layout plan.
Oxnard?
The Oxnard Airport Layout Plan.
I'm sorry, yes, the Oxnard, Oxnard Airport Layout Plan Update.
Just a suggestion, the next time we have these, if there's a footnote would be, because that was a very good question, did we lose the money? Where did the money go, so we didn't lose the money? Suggestion.
Okay.
And it was mentioned, the property can only be used for agriculture. That means no park cars from the harbor.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So, just a couple of questions on access to airports for Ventura County, given that I'm looking at a couple of years, 2021 for Oxnard, having a lot of tightness in being able to have the airport runways open or the taxiways. At what point do we start planning for people coming to Camrio? Where do, where do we put them, when the runway's closed, how long? What's the process going to be on that?
So, at the moment, what we're trying to do in working with the FAA was trying, we're trying to stagger the, the runway work, work between both airports, in order to keep at least one airport available all the time. Now, we understand that we potentially don't have the capacity to accommodate all aircraft or all businesses at the other airport. So, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to figure out if there are phases where we can actually close areas of the, of the runway, for example, and accommodate others. There's been discussions about potentially using some of the taxiways as runways. Those seem to be real expensive, and I don't know how exactly that, that would take place right now. But all those discussions are taking place right now. We, as the Department of Airports, have been looking at our neighboring airports, on how Santa Barbara does it, how Banais do the projects that they have. The only difference, I guess, that we would have, well, I mean, there's plenty of differences, but the most notable difference between these airports and those airports is that they have more than one runway. Each of those airports have more than one runway, and we only have, we have single runways at both of our airports.
Okay, and then the other real conflict I see is the 20, could you go back one slide where you had the Oxnard major?
Twenty.
I'm sorry, 2024 in Oxnard, I thought, or is it 2025, that one? The 15 million one? Okay, and that matches up with nearly the same time that Camrio's closed for rehab. That's in 2024, 25.
So, if you notice, this is actually taxiway work. So, the runway would be accessible. Some of the taxiway, taxiways would, I mean, we would face it, this is a, this would need coordination, but this is not, nothing that would stop aircraft from coming in or going out of Oxnard. I mean, it's work that needs to be faced, and, and we just have to match the construction schedules.
So, the, if everything went on schedule, it was a piece of cake. The problem I see is that the 2024, 2023 Camrio entire runway then gets bounced up, and you got to move a bunch of airplanes to Oxnard. Now, you're talking about where the heck are you going to put them?
Correct. Well, keep in mind that the runway projects and the taxiway projects, they're, they're not a year-long projects. So, we will try to coordinate and do it at different times, even though it might be within the same year.
Staggered.
Exactly.
Just remember, try to keep August and Camrio clean.
We will remember.
Not, not the top priority of the Department of Airports, I don't think.
Well, maybe it should.
Well.
We enjoy the air show very much.
I think that concludes my presentation, unless there's any additional questions.
Need a motion for? Mr. Chair?
For, I guess we have, since it's a joint thing, it should be, is it separate or is it together? Because it's.
Separate?
They would be separate.
All right, for Camrio, then, for item B, do I hear a motion for approval?
I move to approve the five-year capital improvement program for Camarillo Airport, authorizing the Director of Airports that is designated to apply for grants for fund projects scheduled for federal fiscal years 2019 and 2020, outlined in the CIP upon notification from the FAA and the California Department of Transportation Aeronautics Program that funds are available.
And do I have a second?
I have a quick comment. Should this only be 2019, 2020, or should that be from 19 out through 2024, as outlined?
So we, since we come back each year, and the CIPs are revised, we only ask for 2019 and 2020, and that's usually, that's mostly because of how long the process is sometimes. This is just for, to be able to apply for grants, we actually come back before the Commission Authority and the Board of Supervisors to accept a grant. So this is really just giving us the ability.
If they get extra money thrown at them, then they have the capability.
They can snatch it up.
For the two years to go forward, is that the way I understand it?
That's correct.
Okay, with that, I'll, I'll second.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
And for Oxnard, motion?
So move then?
Okay, I'll second. All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all, my hearing, I've been done, we're one hundred percent, let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Directors' Report, number seven.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to report that if, even though the weather conditions are not that favorable out there, we have a special visitor, they, they are working with the EIA, and it is the Ford Tri-Motor, basically the first aircraft that was used for airline service back in the day, in the nineteen twenties, is at Camarillo, and it will be here until the seventeenth of this month, so when you get, if you get an opportunity, and I would advise you to go and check it out, it's a really nice aircraft, again, three engines, and it is a historic vehicle in a way, so it's out there.
If I could add, since I've written in that their, their route is right over all of your all's domain, so you, you go, they take off and go over Oxnard and go along the beach to Magoo, and then come back in over the, the university, and then come in over Camarillo. So if you haven't ever had a chance, if it's a pretty day, it's a great ride.
Is it noisy?
No. No.
The, the second item that I have is, we actually, in coordination with the Waypoint Cafe, Jim Maglos, the Ventura County Ninety-Nines, CAF, EIA, and many, many others, we concluded the project to improve the, the viewport at Camarillo Airport. So if you go by there now, it looks nice, there's a sign that actually identifies the, the viewport, there's an accessory, there's a gate that has an aircraft on top, and even with lights on the wingtips, so you can see if it's approaching you or leaving you. And it's a, it's a nice project, and it's attracting more people from the community, and obviously, it's helping as, bring kids into aviation, and bring the community into the airport as the asset and jewel that Camarillo Airport is. The other item that I have is, we, about the director search, the CEO's office is still processing the applications, I guess. I'm not privy as to exactly, like, you know, how many applicants and everything else, but I know that they are looking to interview people soon, so we're hoping that within the next month or two, there should be a new Director of Airports appointed. And the last one, again, was about the hangar list update, then the talks continue. The next meeting that we have with the Hangar Owners Association is scheduled for March first, and the CEO's office is involved, so again, we're trying to protect the airport, we're trying to, again, maintain the relationship with the tenants, and, and be, be a, be a good landlord, so that's, that's my update.
You had a couple of items that you had been asked to report on from our last meeting, Supervisor Long, from your last, last month's number twelve Airport Authority comments. On those that Supervisor Long requested, you can probably delay them, but it talks about the month-to-month relate, that you already did the month-to-month process.
Exactly.
Okay, and then the future airport review on fees charging to permits, do you want to delay that until Supervisor Long?
Yes, so I, I believe the request from Supervisor Long was to have that at a future meeting, and my comment was that we have the rent and fee schedule, and it's probably going to come up during the rent and fee schedule, because the fee might actually change. So that will be brought to your body, I'm, I'm thinking probably in the month of April or May.
Okay, and the next item, I think, has already been answered.
So are we in twelve now?
We're in last month's twelve for the.
Okay, last month, okay.
Because there were authority questions, that there were four or five authority questions.
Okay, guys, one of the things that I wanted to share was, we talked about having the Brown Act 101, you know, because we, last time when we had the special meeting, we, there was a lot of concerns about, when can we speak, and we speak on items out in the agenda and so forth. So I think Jorge, maybe a recommendation is going to come in from maybe Leroy, give us a, a Brown Act 101 course, for that matter.
Yes, so, so I've actually talked to Leroy Smith, our county council, and he is available to provide the training on the Brown Act, and it's probably going to be within the next two, three weeks. Anna Castro from our office, she will be emailing everybody, trying to get a date. We're hoping that it's going to be a Thursday, it may be a, a special meeting, and since we, we were supposed to have the bylaws reviewed and approved in March, we may actually do the training and do the bylaws at the same time, we're thinking, maybe. But we're working on that, and also the, these two bodies, the Oxnard Airport Authority and the Camerillo Airport Authority, and also the Airport Advisory Commission are probably going to meet all, all together in order to receive this training, and Leroy Smith is amenable to that.
Mr. Chair, can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
You know, Leroy, we have a MAC, you know, in, in my district, in all districts for that matter, municipal advisory council, and Leroy did such a good job that it was maybe thirty minutes, you know, at the most, at the time, so I'm just, do we have to have a special meeting? Can we just have it in a regular meeting, as opposed to having a special?
We can try to have it in a regular meeting.
You know, I'm not sure how the other board members feel, because I don't, you know, I think we could probably have, maybe, if, if it's a two-hour meeting, maybe the first hour or something, just a suggestion, you know, just to have a special meeting for Brown Act 101, you know.
And then the difficulties of getting everybody there.
Getting everybody.
Logistics, they can just come thirty, twenty, thirty minutes before that and get it accomplished. I'm all for it, I think it's a great idea.
You know, I would just have a recommendation to the board, that, you know, that we have it, you know.
I agree.
Okay.
Any thoughts on that, or?
Yes, I believe Supervisor Long requested a special meeting, so I'll talk to her to notify her what the pleasure of this body is.
Thank you.
And then the last item was, you had a meeting on hangar, with the hangar owners for twenty-two January, is there any update on that?
We had a meeting, they came back to us, and they, they made their proposal, so we're working on a response, and that's what we will be presenting to them on March first.
Okay, thank you. Item eight is reports.
Unless you have any questions.
You want to have questions on any of the reports? Yes.
Yes, the noise complaint in Oxnard, does that come from consistently with the same address?
Mr. Fell, answer that.
Well, the Oxnard one was sort of interesting, because it was posted under Camarillo Airport, so that was, I had a question on that, too.
The noise complaint that was for December was from an entirely new person, new address and all that, so, no, not this one.
Typically, the, the noise complaints that have an Oxnard address is because they are under the departure path for runway eight, basically north of the freeway, but they are still within Oxnard, so somebody from Oxnard calls about Camarillo.
For runway eight departures?
Runway two-six, runway two-six, I apologize.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Jorge, what is?